Not that I know it first.
Yeah, but that name you read all the time.
Yeah, I was already.
His family, he was.
What poor dude.
Just some popped up on two news, uh, news feeds.
She was back today. Wasn't that what I asked? Not in the office, she, she was working somewhere.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is six o'clock and time to start our August meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. The year's moving along, the summer, I hope you are enjoying your summer. In boarding the heat and being able to have a vacation, maybe have a little time away. So we thank you for being here tonight. We have several matters to, um, on our agenda, a lot of recognitions tonight. For those that have accomplishments in our county, we want to make sure they're duly recognized. And just thank each one of you for your interest in county government and being here with us. We're going to start our meeting a little bit differently than what, what we have before. And I'm going to ask the Board of County Commissioners to, uh, to meet out front here behind the podium. And we're going to ask Dr. Shackelford to, to join us. I, I think that most of you are aware that Dr. Shackelford has retired as the President of Randolph Community College. And he leaves, uh, he leaves a legacy that will be hard to follow. And, uh, we wanted to just give him a special recognition tonight. And I thought to do that, um, earlier, Dr. Shackelford was a recipient of the Order of the Longleaf Pine. It is one of the highest, um, uh, of recognitions for private citizens in North Carolina. I was asked to write a letter to the state on Dr. Shackelford's behalf as they were considering whether or not to award, um, the Order of the Longleaf Pine to Dr. Shackelford. And I'm going to read just a few snippets, comments that I wrote, um, on his behalf to give you some idea of what Dr. Shackelford has meant to this county, to the Randolph Community College, the staff there, the administration, and especially to all those students who have come through that school during his tenure here. What is amazing that since it, the Randolph Community College started, we've only had four presidents to, to hold that position with Randolph Community College. And, um, as I said, it will be a tough act to follow. It is with great pleasure that I write to you today to nominate Randolph Community College President Dr. Robert S. Shackelford for the Order of the Longleaf Pine. Not only has he been an educator for more than 32 years, more than 20 in the North Carolina Community College system, but he also served as a chaplain in the North Carolina Air National Guard for 16 years, including counseling with survivors, victims, coworkers, and family members af- after the nine 11 attack on the Pentagon. Since becoming RCC President, Dr. Shackelford has changed the culture of the college along with adopting its motto, creating opportunities and changing lives. That is the code he lives by every day that he sets foot on that campus. Then I went back to high school and some of that, I'm going to leave that out. Dr. Shackelford first joined Randolph Community College in 1998 as the program head for the Early Childhood Associate Curriculum and eventually became Chair of the Human Services Department. He also taught early childhood education, human development, family studies, sociology, human relations, and leadership development at the University of North Carolina at Greensboro, High Point University, and Gardner Webb University. Dr. Shackelford served as Dean of Student Services at Randolph Community College from 2000 to 2003. Then he kind of got crossed up because he went to Rockingham County for just a little while, where he was President of the Student Services Program. But Dr. Shackelford assumed his leadership of Randolph Community College, January the 1st, 2007. He was officially inaugurated as the fourth President of the college on March the 8th of 2007. His tenure at RCC included the opening of the Richard Petty Center for the College's Automotive Programs, the Continuing Education and Industrial Center, the Gene Haas Computer Integrated Machining Institute, and very recently, the Dr. Robert S. Shackelford Allied Health Center. In 2011, Dr. Shackelford received the Citizen of the Year Award from the Ashburn Randolph Chamber of Commerce. In 2013, he was named President of the Year by the North Carolina State Board of Community Colleges. And in 2019, he received a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Archdale Trinity Chamber of Commerce. Dr. Shackelford has distinguished himself. And in this process, and, and I mentioned that the Allied Health Center is, ha- it bears his name. But his name and his work could be on every building on that campus. Now, this wasn't in my letter, but the mark that he leaves will follow long after he's gone. And again, for those students who came through and benefited for the improvements that were made. Speaking for this board and county manager, our staff, the privilege to work with him and budgeting and the issues of, of seriousness and importance to the college and to the citizens of this county, we are forever indebted to him. Now, for many years, we have adopted him as chaplain of our board. So tonight, Dr. Shackelford will ask you to give our invocation one more time. Ju- just a memento, this is the clock. It's in grateful appreciation to Dr. Robert Shackelford for your service to the Randolph County community, June the 6th, 2022, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Just a moment. I also have another gift for you. This is a pin. This is a pin that was made from the willow oak tree that stood on the campus, the yarn, the lawn of this courthouse. So we have some of those made. You will be the first one that we have presented a pin to from that tree. And I hope that you keep it and remember us for it. God bless you. Thank you for your service. And now you can do the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm so very honored and it's been quite a privilege and an honor to work with each of you. I've been blessed by our association and God bless you in all that you do. Let us pray. Our Father, as the rest of the world struggles tonight with wars and divisions and famines, fires, floods, we gather here tonight for the peaceful practice of local government. We gather here knowing that we're blessed above all understanding. I pray that you would bless this Board of Commissioners and the work that they do. Goodness sakes, they don't do it for the money. They have a lot of frustration and headaches and a lot of dilemmas that they deal with, but they do it just because they love our community. And they chose to give of themselves to the service of our community. I pray that you'd bless them. Bless all of our elected officials, local, state, our federal government, even international leaders who strive for peace and human dignity. Bless all those in uniform around the world, whether police officers, firefighters, rescue EMS paramedics, all those who give of their time and effort each day to make our communities and our nation a safer place to be. Bless those in uniform around the world, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, who leave their families and put their lives on the line to protect the freedoms that we enjoy each day. And Lord, I know you look down upon us and you see all the divisions and all the rancor and the anger and the bitterness in our country that seems to divide us these days. I pray that you would restore us to a time when being an American meant a whole lot more than being a Democrat or Republican. And when serving the people, all of the people, meant more than serving my kind of people and winning the next election. I pray, Lord, that you would remove from us the bonds that we have so strongly formed with division. Break down those walls, those barriers. Forgive us of our political and cultural and spiritual blindness. And God, we pray tonight that you would restore our beautiful, wonderful country. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. These things, I pray in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We still have more, uh, recognitions to do this evening. And, uh, next is, um, Teresa Stinson, who is retiring from Board of Social Services, the Department of Social Services. Tracy Murphy will do the presenting.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Stinson, while she comes forward, I would like to add my comments to everyone else's. Dr. Sha- Shackelford, I thank you so much for the leadership and the grace that you have shown me since I have been at Department of Social Services and a part of the Randolph County community. You're a class act. Ms. Stinson is here this evening. She is celebrating her retirement from Randolph County Department of Social Services with a total of 19 years of service at DSS. She is a 1978 graduate of Eastern Randolph High School, and she worked there 14 years before coming to Department of Social Services. She's been a great asset to us at DSS. She has a positive attitude. She treats people with respect, compassion, and understanding, and maintains very high standards with her work. She is adopting a two-year-old baby girl named Phoenix, and I believe Phoenix is here with her today. And she plans on spending her time in retirement teaching Phoenix about the Lord. She is active member at New Life Family Fellowship and is a fun, member of a fun-loving group of ladies called the Hallelujah Honeybees, and that sounds just like Teresa. She enjoys spending time with family and doing anything with water. She states that her time at DSS turned into one of God's greatest blessings in life. She's met some lifelong friends and has been able to assist the needy whenever they need it. Her retirement plans are to continue to care for the ones in her life that need her, and she would like for her and Phoenix to spend some time in Florida with family in St. Augustine, as well as with anything with water. I want to wish Teresa best wishes for a long and happy retirement. It is well deserved. Thank you, Teresa, for your service. You want to say anything?
No. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of Randolph County. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I learned a lot in life and with the systems and the things that change daily. The only thing constant at DSS is change, and you have to be willing to change with it. I certainly appreciate the opportunity and the time that I spent there. Kenny, thank you so much for being at the end of every phone call and each of you for representing Randolph County.
Come forward, Teresa. This is in grateful appreciation to Teresa Cheek Stinson in recognition of 19 years of service, June the 6th, 2022, Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Teresa was to have been with us last month and, uh, circumstances, yeah, she was in Florida at the water, around the water. But we're glad she's here today. Thank you, Teresa, for all your work and service to this county. It's been a pleasure. Thank you very much. Yes, yes. Our next rec- our next recognition goes, um, to, um, Michael Rowland, who has been our IT Director for 31 years, I think it is. Where's Michael?
Michael, come on, come on up here.
Come on up, Michael.
I asked the chairman if I could, uh, say a few words about Michael Rowland. He's, he's worked for Randolph County for 31 years. And I'm looking at the, all the young people we have out here in the audience tonight and 30, get over here, Michael. I want people to see you. 31 years as a computer specialist, as our IT Director in Randolph County. And I see the, the young people that are here now can't imagine a world without all the technology that we have. And I, I look back at 31 years, I told Michael, I said, he told me when he was going to retire, I said, Michael, I knew you when you were just a little kid. And I did, because back in, when he started work with Randolph County, think about it, 1991, we were all driving around with CB radios in our car. We, and the young people go, what? What are you, what are you talking about? You know, we all had, that was the technology that we had. And this man right here, Michael Rowland, he's been involved in the internet development in Randolph County. He's been involved in, in all the technology that you see, that, that the, the young ones that are here. If you can imagine 31 years ago, what Randolph County and, and what you see today, how we developed that. Michael Rowland, uh, there's several programs, the, the county's first website. We all live now with websites, we can't imagine a world without it. Michael Rowland helped develop the very first in Randolph County, email. People go, email? I thought that was just something we've had all our lives. But no, we haven't. And Michael Rowland was involved in developing email for Randolph County Government to what it is, is today. And, and it goes on and on and on. When you dial 911, you dial 911 and you get an emergency services operator. Michael Rowland had a lot to do and his staff in, in making sure that that operates very good. Mike was a, he's a veteran of the United States Air Force during the height of the Cold War. And I know some of the young ones don't know what the Cold War was either, but that was a, a bad time in the history, history of this country. I'm honored to have worked and served with Mike Rowland during these 31 years. And, and when you think of someone that retires, you don't think of all the different programs that they developed, all the different things that they do. You just have a, an image, something that sticks in your mind. And my thoughts of Michael Rowland, he, he's always calm, no matter what happens, he's, he's the same. You, you, he's same, level-headed, no matter what crisis might come up. If someone calls me in the middle of the night at 2:00 AM and they go, hey, you know, the website for the county got hacked and there got bad words all over it, and I call Mike and Mike goes, we're on it. And it gets taken care of. There's, uh, that's my opinion of Michael Rowland. No matter how complicated the situation is, no matter how big of an emergency is, we could depend on Mike Rowland and the staff that he, he represents to get the job done. So Mike, we thank you for 31 years. We, I, you, I know you're going to be on your motorcycle soon, doing what you do, but thank you so much for all that you meant to Randolph County Government. Now, the chairman has, uh, something for you.
Michael? You've been here a long time and you've seen us through a lot. I, I do want to say, Michael got us through the pandemic and everything was shut down. He, he made a way for, for this board and our office to stay in touch with the citizens of this county. And, uh, we're streaming right now through YouTube, Facebook, and he and Doug helped set that up so the citizens could still see how our county government functions here. And, uh, thank you so much for that and all the things you've done over the years. In grateful appreciation to Michael Rowland in recognition of 31 years of service, August the 1st, 2022, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Thank you, Mike. And we're going to give Michael one of the pins made from the willow oak that was on grounds of this historic courthouse. So use it and think of us when you do, or maybe you don't want to. Thank you very much, Mike. Yes, sir. God bless you, Michael. Appreciate it. Congratulations, Michael. Yes, sir.
Just go make your keyboard out of it.
All right, our next recognition, I'm going to ask Coach Rick Manus from the Wheatmore High School Warrior Soccer Team, if he and the members of his team that, that might be here this afternoon, if you'd come forward. The Wheatmore High School, uh, Lady Warrior Soccer Team, not only did they win the state championship in soccer, they went 25-0. They were undefeated in that process, and of course, that means they were 12-0 in their conference. One of the team members, Ellie Garrison, who, uh, scored 77 goals during this season. I think she's been traveling some this summer, maybe out to Nike in Oregon. And we're glad that she could be here with us today also. And these members that are here on the team, um, there's no million team, as they say. It's a, it's a team sport. And, uh, I'm sure it took that for this team to, uh, to accomplish what they did. Coach, anything you want to say?
All these people retiring here, I retired from a job I love to do, a job I love. The Lord's blessed me every day.
Amen.
Great group of kids.
We have a certificate of recognition by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners congratulating Wheatmore High School Lady Warrior Soccer Team for their achievement of the 2021-22 statewide 2A Athletic Conference Girl Soccer State Champions. Coach, girl.
Thank you.
Uh, David McAdamsen, would you come forward? David here. David. David, congratulations. David McAdamsen, Trinity High School, that's my alma mater, at the North Carolina High School Athletic Association State Wrestling Tournament on February the 18th and 19th of this year at the Greensboro Coliseum. David was a 2A state champion in 138-pound weight class. His coach is Brandon Coggins, and we are so grateful, Brandon, have you, um, David, to have you here to participate and get some recognition. And, uh, thank you for your service, thank you for your dedication. I had a son that wrestled, he was the gopher. He, he was, he was the one they threw in. But I, I got to watch it grow up with him and, uh, it's a great sport, great sport. So this is to, by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, recognizing David McAdamsen, who won the title of 2022 State Wrestling Champion in the 138-pound category of the North Carolina High School Athletic Association State 2A High School Wrestling Championship on Saturday, February the 19th, 2022. Our next presentation, Allison Kidd, where's Allison? Would you come forward? Allison Kidd of Franklinville graduated from Eastern, from Randolph Early College High School in May. She's the daughter of Bruce and Amy Kidd Allison, and an impressive 4.82 high school GPA. She will be attending Campbell University and is planning to major in kinesiology. How did I do with that?
That's correct, yeah.
I have no, I had no idea what kinesiology was, so I had to Google that. It's the mechanics of human movement and has the impact and how, and how they have an impact on our health and our well-being. And that's very important. Uh, the reason that Allison is here, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, several years ago, started a, um, youth voice program. That, that was the, um, project of one of- That was the project of one of our presidents, and the youth were involved at every one of our conferences for a number of years. The pandemic sort of put that on hold for a couple of years, but it's coming back this year. And our annual conference is next week in Cabarrus County at Concord. And Allison will be Randolph County's representative at that conference. And that's why she's here this afternoon, is to kind of tell us what she'll be doing and as she goes off to represent Randolph County in our youth program. Allison?
Yep, so I think you wrapped it up pretty well. My name is Allison Kidd. I graduated from Randolph Early College High School and Randolph Community College in May. So I received my Associate of Arts as well as my high school diploma. I'm attending Campbell University, and I plan to graduate, after I graduate from there, attend either PA school or the med school to be a DO. So I'm going to go into sports medicine. I'm part of the Clover Clovers 4-H Club here in Randolph County. From 2020 to 2021, I served as a secretary. And then from 2021 to 2022, I served as the president. So this year, I got selected as the delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners for Randolph County's youth delegate. The conference is going to be August 12th and 13th. And while I'm there, I'm going to be doing a variety of workshops, sitting down with leaders in the community to build my leadership and communication skills. And I invite each of you to come out on August 13th for the Youth Involvement Breakfast Saturday morning.
All right. I look forward to seeing you there. I think David and I will be there. I don't know if any other commissioners have signed up for that, but we'll be down there and maybe you could have breakfast with us or something like that. We'll probably be in there with you on Saturday morning, usually is what they do. We look forward to having you.
I look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Very much. Appreciate it.
We need a photograph of that.
Sure. All right, is Julie Miller here? Julie? Pam Resch? Pam Resch is the director of our Juvenile Day Reporting Center. One of the focuses of our county for the last several years has been in wellness. And you're going to hear a report on that from Sam a little bit later this evening. But this is a special, this is special recognition and the reason that we do here in the county, the reason we do some things that we do relative to the programs that are offered here. And I'm going to read what Pam has written for us because it's very important and it'll give you a background on how this whole thing sort of transpired pretty much in a single day. And the Juvenile Day Reporting Center is committed to performing the best job possible and respectfully carries the mission of Randolph County's vision of serving with heart from the heart in our everyday lives. Our employees are qualified professional individuals who are trained, certified, and held to high standards of professionalism, growth, development, and public service. Being in public service means selflessly committing yourself to your community in a variety of ways and holding yourself accountable to the people we serve. All of our employees are certified and trained in CPR and first aid, ready to assist our clients and community should we need to. On July the 13th of 2022, the Juvenile Day Reporting Center toured the Emergency Management Department, it's down near the county office building, with our summer camp participants and spoke with our community partners about a variety of services that their agency provides to our community as well as job opportunities available. Our youth engaged in a short training in reference to hands-on CPR. It was an educational and informational experience for our youth and my team. Later on in the same day, one of my employees, Julie Miller, who has been with the department one year and recently promoted to full-time, was performing her job duty driving a youth back home. On her way back to the office, she encountered a vehicle stopped in her lane. She stopped behind them and honked her horn, to which there was no response from the driver. She walked up to the driver's window and saw an elderly woman slumped over on the steering wheel. The driver's side window was cracked some, and she attempted to wake the person up. When she got no response, she immediately contacted 911 and informed them of her location and the situation. Two bystanders came over to her aid, and together they were instructed by the 911 operator to remove the woman from the vehicle and immediately check her for a pulse. Ms. Miller did exactly as they instructed and stayed on the phone with them as they instructed her to perform CPR. Ms. Miller immediately began hands-only CPR that she was witnessing earlier in the same day at the EMS tour and was able to perform until help arrived. When EMS arrived, they stayed with Ms. Miller and switched out with chest compressions. A few more moments later, they were able to revive the woman. Ms. Miller stayed and gave a statement to police and EMS and then contacted Ms. Resch and switched out with Miller, stayed and gave a statement to police and EMS, contacted Ms. Resch immediately to inform me of what had occurred. I waited for Ms. Miller to arrive back to the office and sat with her along, allowing her to decompress from a situation that had occurred. I provided Ms. Miller with the county's wellness hotline and informed her of the services available to her through the county. I am truly proud of Ms. Miller and thankful for her and her training. Ms. Miller's selfless actions and training we provide to all of our employees assisted her in saving a life in our county, truly serving with heart from the heart of North Carolina. That's a great story, folks, and why we do some of the things that we do here at Randolph County. And we're just so proud of you. And you had to, you didn't have time to be scared or anxious, obviously.
Go into the motion of...
It's all instinct and your first, your first time of doing that and...
CPR on a person, yeah.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. This is to Julie Miller in recognition of your outstanding efforts to go above and beyond the call of duty to aid a citizen in need by the Randolph County Board of Commissioners, August the 1st, 2022. I do want to say, we recognize the two schools and their state championships. The Randleman High School baseball team was 33-1 this year and won their second consecutive state championship in baseball. And the Southwest Randolph Girls Volleyball Team was a 2A state champions with an overall season record of 28-5. Now, they could not be with us today. When school starts back, we might have them. We do have certificates for them, but I do want to mention them and recognize them. I know we have several folks from the county schools here today. These kids put a lot into the team effort and the working hard to win, and we're so appreciative of that and the recognition they bring to their schools, the system as a whole, and to Randolph County. So we want to recognize them today also. So I think that takes care of all of our recognitions today. They're all so great, and this was a rewarding day to go through this and think it was timely, needed, and I hope you took as much from it as this board has in recognizing these folks and their contributions to this county. So anybody have anything you want to say? All right. So now we have our public comment period. I asked Mr. Morgan to read the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The rules of procedure for the public comment period are as follows. Excuse me. The public comment period will be at the beginning of the meeting. It will be limited to 15 minutes. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Again, Mr. Chairman, the rules of procedure for the public comment period, the public comment period will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name, both orally and in writing, before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation.
Franklin Suggs.
90%. This board has contended more than once that 90% of Randolph County voters cast their votes for Donald Trump, and that by inference equates to 90% of Randolph County citizens supporting the Confederate monument outside. Both of these statements are misleading. Trump did garner 76.55% of the Randolph County vote in 2016, and with a higher turnout in 2020, 77.6%. To conflate voting with support for the monument is quite a reach. Per the 2020 census, there were 144,557 persons residing in Randolph County, 109,419 of whom were adults. Due to rounding, the following total exceeds 100%, but 77.8% were white, 12.2% Hispanic, 5.5% black, 1.9% two or more races, 1.5% Asian, 1.1% multiracial, .5% American Indian, Alaska Native, .3% Other, and .03% Pacific Islander, Native Hawaiian. As of July 23rd, 2022, 95,385 persons were registered to vote, per the North Carolina State Board of Elections. Of these, 49,658 are Republican, 29,229 unaffiliated, 15,904 Democrat, and 594 Libertarian. 82.5% of all Randolph County voters are white. Without a cross-section of Randolph County residents to poll, I cannot be sure of the true ratio of monument supporters to Trump voters, but I can assure you that the figure is significantly lower than this board purports. A different number set, one that really sets the standard for who has a stake in preserving the monument, is that of the local men who served in the Confederate Army. Some 3,000 Randolph County residents served. Of those 3,000 Randolph County Confederate veterans, how many still have progeny living in Randolph County? I have to infer a good bit to calculate a proper estimate, but I believe these descendants to be a minority of Randolph County's current total population. Thus, by my own inference, supporters of this monument number substantially fewer than this board asserts. I say all this to remind this board to be more thoughtful in presenting opinions and facts and to understand that blanket statements of any kind denigrate a great number of Randolph County residents, certainly more than the 10% who, by your own reflections, are of low regard. Please consider my words and use them to serve all 100% of Randolph County's residents, as you affirmed you would, not just concerning this issue, but in all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard that reference several times here. I want to say this, we don't usually respond after a public comment, but that's sort of been a theme. 100% of the citizens of this county have access to every service we provide, 100% irregardless of race, creed, or color, whether it's social services, public health, our schools, if they choose to go to public schools, or they can go to private schools. Every service that this county provides is available to every living citizen in this county. This board has voted, taken action, as we were asked to do on numbers of times by both sides of this issue, and we did that. Do we have another speaker?
Yes, sir. Alan Lamb.
I am Alan Lamb, Randleman, North Carolina. Here, I have a voice. At the polls, I have a voice. Upon this list, which I take to the polls, is each of y'all's good names. Whether you should run, unopposed, you all have my vote.
Dean Brown.
Dean Brown, I appreciate the opportunity to address the board. The two controversial votes they've made this year, one to protect the unborn, one to reverence and respect the dead, our soldiers that died in the war. We thank you for this. We appreciate your support for both. Something I've noticed, those that are in favor of abortion, they don't come back every month and groan and moan about the vote didn't go their way. Are they better character and better class? These, against the memorial, they come back every month. They've got another argument. I mean, the board has voted. They were asked to vote. They voted. Folks, this is over. Let's let it go. Let's be done with it. Let's move on. There's people having trouble buying gas, buying groceries. They don't know if they're going to have a job. Let's work on something to help people. I think not only has the board voted in support of the memorial and in support of the unborn, I think the voters have spoken. These two that were up for election, they both were reinstated. I believe if the citizens were against the memorial or against the abortion ban, they would have voted these two out. So I think that would be in support. I think the citizens, the taxpayers, the people of the county are in support of this board, or these would have been voted out. And that's about all I've got to say. Thank y'all and God bless y'all for your support for the unborn, for your support for our dead. Thank you.
Dr. Chuck Edgerton.
Good evening. I am Dr. Chuck Edgerton, pleased to be here before you again to speak about the issue of the statute, an issue that will continue until we've ended white supremacy in Randolph County, because that statute stands for white supremacy. I recently made a pilgrimage to Montgomery, Alabama, and I visited the National Memorial, the lynching museum. I don't know if all of you have heard about it before, but it represents two thousand twenty-five hundred people who were lynched in the United States. And when you walk into this space, you see these metal boxes hanging from the ceiling. They're about the size of coffins. And on each metal box is listed the county, the state, and the name and the date of the person who was lynched. Now fortunately, Randolph County is not represented in that particular museum, but I think we know why, because that statute stands for a lie about our county. Our county has been peaceful. Our county has been against and voted against secession. Our county has voted to keep us in the Union, and this statute stands as a lie for what the true history is. I think as long as we live this lie, and I would say unfortunately, the whole concept that we have as white people is really a lie, because there is really no such thing as white people. Whiteness was created to elevate a group of European people and to combine them together to really support slavery. I would say that whiteness was created as anti-blackness. That was its very purpose. Racial designations, even the concepts of race, have no ground in science whatsoever. So I think as long as that statute stands there, we will be working for justice here in Randolph County. And I do hope that each one of you will continue to search your hearts, because it doesn't matter how many votes there are for us. You know, the last vote was kind of seemed to be on a false premise, that there was some kind of emergency that needed to require the vote, but it doesn't really matter. There have been many counties that have voted many times. We will be on this until we're done, until we're finished with this issue, until we really have racial justice and an end of white supremacy in Randolph County. And if I may close with a prayer. O divine providence, this assemblage is composed of thy friends, who are attracted by thy beauty and are set ablaze by the fire of thy love. Turn these souls into heavenly angels. Resuscitate them through the breath of thy Holy Spirit. Grant them eloquent tongues and resolute hearts. Bestow upon them heavenly power and merciful susceptibilities. Cause them to become the promulgators of the oneness of mankind and the cause of love and concord in the world of humanity, so that the perilous darkness of ignorant prejudice may vanish through the light of the Son of Truth. This dreary world become illumined. This material realm may absorb the rays of the world of spirit. These different colors may merge into one color, and the melody of praise may rise to the kingdom of thy sanctity. Verily, thou art the omnipotent and the almighty. Amen.
That it? Okay. Thank all of you for participating.
Sir.
Yes?
I just wanted to address one thing.
Give us your name.
I just want to address, my name is Greg Allman.
Pardon?
Greg Allman. No affiliation with the Allman Brothers, his uncle was, he didn't die. No. I really was just going to come to this meeting to first off, just kind of learn to see how y'all do things here. So I didn't really come prepared, but, and I was going to let this monument, as pertaining to the monument out here, and I was just going to let it go, because I feel as if when this monument's removed, the accomplishment is it going to make it a better world to live in? Is it going to make this a better society? I doubt it very much. But I have deep roots here in Randolph County, dating back to the Allmans, the Ledwells, the Coxas, the Browns, the Robins, even though I was raised in eastern North Carolina, most of my family has been raised right here, and here I am. And I live here now, and have for some time. I'm discharged from the United States Marine Corps. One reason why I can't hear very well, some explosive TNT around with a lot of artillery fire, C four, I don't have very good hearing. But this is considering an article on March seventeenth, 2022, this year, and it's Confederate Monument Memorial, and it's, the article was titled Randolph Residents Split Over Decision. And I said before, I was just going to let all this go, and just, because it's not going to accomplish anything by removing that meeting, by removing that monument. It was put there as a memorial for the fathers and the sons and the uncles and the husbands who died and fought for what they believed in at that time, and it's almost impossible for us today to put ourselves in that mindset and where it was going to go. But anyway, this is a quote from the Courier Tribune on March seventeenth, 2022, and I did not come here a bit prepared, and I do apologize once again. Didn't put my hearing aids in, but next week I'll be loaded for bear. But the quote from the Courier Tribune was, on the Randolph Residents Split Over Decision, the quote was, and it's a partial quote. "Many see the monument as tribute to Randolph County soldiers who fought in Randolph County, but half of the residents at that time were enslaved and endured hardships." Well, I've heard a lot of talk from my family coming down over the years about the slavery issue, and I thought to myself, I don't think so. I don't think half of Randolph County at that time, and I went to the library over here and looked up at the census, and that quote, by the way, was by a gentleman by the name of Todd Delaney, the man who wrote the article. He was not the man who wrote the article, but the man who wrote the article, Dee Stevens, who wrote the latest article in here, he was using a quote from this Todd Delaney. Guess what came from Facebook? According to the newspaper article. And I go on to say, I guess it's easy to use someone, because I wrote the person who wrote this article in the Courier Tribune, and I did address and wrote him today, earlier today, about this recent article that came out.
Mr. Allman, you're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm going to wrap, this is it. I guess it's easy to use someone else's quote, this is me, to spread extreme inaccuracies, not condoning slavery by any means. The eighteen sixty census of registered slaves by owners in Randolph County was one thousand six hundred and forty-six, not even close to half of the population of this county. The earliest census, the census I could only get, I couldn't get, I did not find in eighteen sixty census. The library was about to close, but in an eighteen fifty census of the population of Randolph County, in eighteen fifty was sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-three.
Mr. Allman, that's your time. We're limited to three minutes.
Thank you so much. That was a quick fifteen minutes, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Sir, sir. Mr. Allman.
Mr. Allman.
Can you sign in, please?
You come sign in over here? Thank you.
There's a pen right there.
Is there anybody else that came here to speak?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I speak a lot, and so I've been trying to not speak. People are probably getting tired of hearing from me, but I do want to correct some records. Yes, it was sixteen hundred slaves in Randolph County. That is not half. I don't know who would say that that was half the people in Randolph County, but it was sixteen hundred slaves. It was sixteen hundred people living in Randolph County in bondage. Those people were citizens of Randolph County. Those people, many of those people, had their children in Randolph County taken from them and sold to somebody else in another state. That happened right here in Randolph County. And so I don't for one second want us to diminish or act like that wasn't a big deal and that wasn't an atrocity, because it was. And when we put the monument out front and you force people to come talk to this body, and if you want to talk to this body, you got to come to this place, and you got to walk past that monument to do it, that is wrong. And I don't care if it was a hundred percent of Randolph County that voted for it. Right is right, and wrong is wrong. If they had voted in nineteen sixty-two and it was left to a vote, we still wouldn't get to eat in the same restaurant together. It is time for us to stand up and say, you know what? I'm going to do what's right. And you know how you know when you're doing what's right? You know that you're doing what's right when you can give an explanation for why you did it, and you can say, I'm confident that I did the right thing, and this is why. And until you can do that, yes, we're going to be back, and we're going to be back next month, and we're going to keep coming back, because we're not going to settle for an injustice in Randolph County. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. We're going to move to our consent agenda. Anyone want to take any of these out separately, or I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided? There's several budget amendments here. I think those were discussed with Will during our process. Anybody have any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we opt the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Motion in second. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, consent agenda is approved. First item of business, new business, is the state of emergency termination. That is my part, and I'm going to refer to, at the start of the pandemic, back in March of two thousand and twenty, as chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, I issued and declared a local state of emergency for Randolph County government in response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. That was primarily in reaction to the state of emergency that was imposed by the governor, Governor Cooper at that time, but it also, in the event that things went worse or that funds were available, it would make Randolph County eligible to receive those funds to deal with that pandemic. The local state of emergency authorized and charged the Randolph County manager to activate the crisis management team to initiate the Randolph County continuity of operations plan along with appropriate personnel, and to launch county operational actions necessary to ensure the continuity of services in Randolph County government. This has been by far the longest local declaration of a local state of emergency in Randolph County's history. The state of emergency issued by the state is set to expire on August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Therefore, and I'm going to read this declaration terminating a local county state of emergency. Section one, on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, at four o'clock PM, I determined and declared a local state of emergency for the following. All unincorporated areas of Randolph County. Other, on March the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty, all municipalities in the county joined with our declaration. It's not, I want to add that we worked very well with our municipalities during those months of a state of emergency, and we kept in constant contact with our municipalities along the way. I have determined that a state of emergency no longer exists in the emergency area indicated in section one above. I thereby terminate the declaration of a local state of emergency and all of the restrictions and orders therein. This declaration shall become effective August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at midnight, declared this first day of August the first, two thousand and twenty-two. So we have ended our state of emergency effective August the sixteenth, which is the same date as that of the state of North Carolina. And I would like to add to that, that we had great help and cooperation, not only with our municipalities, we set up an operations center over at our emergency services building. Our health department set up permanent residents in there for months. We did weekly contact with our citizens and updates of where we are. We had various folks from our community, from our agencies in the county to speak to the public. That was all available on Facebook, so, and I think looking back, you know, they always say hindsight's twenty-twenty. Well, I think we did about as good as we could do through that process, and I think that we weathered that and came through it as good or better than any other county, and that is a tribute to a lot of you folks that's in this room right now, in your various positions, and working for all the citizens of Randolph County to keep us as safe as possible as we went through that process. We had continual updates of our statistics, our numbers, how many we had, how many were hospitalized, just so much that went into that. It's hard, you can't tell all of those issues and the processes that we went through in the work of this board in serving you, the citizens of this county. So with that, we will be ended at midnight on August the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Next item of business is our animal services ordinance, and Jonathan, you're going to bring that up?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. All right. So we're going to go over the new ordinances that me and Amy Scott, the county attorney, has been going over. I believe you guys have a copy in front of you. I'm just going to go through it quickly. The animal services director was added on there. That is a new one. The appeal board for the consists of three, but not more than less than five members. That's for your dangerous dog stuff. That's on page one. Then if you go over onto page three, it's going to be item Z, referring to what is a qualified rescue, animal rescue group that is duly formed as a five oh one C three organization. Okay. Then if you go on page four, this is where we kind of get into the meat of the ordinances. The seventy-two hour rule was kind of in question. That's kind of been in question from day one. There were several ordinances floating around there for the past few years of is this on there, isn't on there, about the seventy-two hours. It is a hundred percent in the ordinances that we exclude county holidays and weekends for the seventy-two hour hold rule. It's all on there now. Like I said, there were several other ones. Like I said, if you choose one that you picked from two thousand and sixteen, it could say something totally different than what's said in two thousand and eighteen, but now it's officially on there. Page five, it goes down on under B, under surrender, it does say in there what is offered to a qualified rescue about animals that are being placed up for adoption or go to rescue that are owner surrendered. And of course, on page six, under four A, under the euthanasia, it was added in there of excluding weekends and holidays as well. Also, on page eight, under line item three B, it's also, we added in there of what people can do after hours, who they can call in order to get an animal control officer to their house or on the street if they need them, to where they can call nine oh one, and one of our animal services officers will be dispatched. Also added on page nine, under, I believe it's three F, any person who identifies a stray animal on his or her property shall contact animal services. This was on there, just, so there was a little bit of questioning of whether people need to contact us if they find a lost animal in the county, or do they just need to post it on Facebook, or how do they need to do it? So adding this- So adding this on there allows people to actually call us. We can post it to where if an animal comes in the shelter, we can contact them right then and there so they can come pick up their animal. As far as dangerous dog, we've changed that quite a bit. It used to be under the public health director. We have now changed that to the director of animal services. We've also added more to what a person has to do if their animal is deemed dangerous by the board. Used to, we only had just a few things here and there, but like I said, we want to make it tough on people that do have dangerous dogs in this county to be able to protect everyone around that animal. Also, we added in there where we were actually gonna start doing more inspections on dangerous animals inside the county. Then we added a little bit more stiffer fee for the violation on that per offense. That was on number 11. And then on page 12, on G, starting at six, where it talks about tethering dogs ordinance. Nothing on it changed from one through five. We originally, I think it was in 2017, 2018, that was a part of, that was put in for the tethering dog ordinance. All we did was add to the tethering ordinance of what is proper tethering for someone. It is still in accordance with this vision of the section. It's just adding what is the proper tethering so we can actually enforce it as animal control officers. It's just adding stricter stuff to it, just so like I said, the animal is still safe on the, on the tether. Rabies control on section four, added in there CRVs, which are certified rabies vaccinators from the shelter, to where we can actually give our own rabies vaccines of animals inside the shelter. And then, that should be just about it. The fines are in the back on page 17, 18. And that, yeah, 17, 18, just pretty much highlighting where the tethering ordinance that was in there, we only had what a one-time fee was. We went in and add a first offense, second offense, third offense, how much that would be. And then we also add on section seven on fees on page 18, where we talk about animal services may charge fees for rare services provided pursuant to this ordinance. And that is pretty much just the new ordinance. Like I said, this is something that's been in the works now for, I think about two years. Whenever we became our own, under Hal, the county manager, we had to change everything out from under public health department. So it felt like it was time to go ahead and just revamp all the ordinances at that point instead of trying to, try to redo it every two or three years.
This has been reviewed by the animal services board and all their recommendations were incorporated into this proposed ordinance.
Yes.
Most of it being just clarifying things that needed clarifying.
Correct. And some of these ordinances have been in there. It just depends on which ordinance you actually printed off online. There were, apparently there was two or three ordinances online. So now we've actually got everything clarified on one single ordinance. And then we'll go in and try to get up with IT, I guess, to try to figure out which, all the other ones need to be taken out for sure. So we got the exact one that needs to be in there.
Mr. Chairman, we also, the bylaws of the animal services advisory board that the Board of Commissioners initially adopted back in 2019, which creates the animal services advisory board. The, there were a couple of recommendations in the bylaws, one of which was, as you know, the chairman and the vice chairman of the Board of County Commissioners serve on the animal services advisory board. And what we're recommending is that there only be one commissioner on the animal services board, just like the other boards of the county, the Board of Health and Social Services and the other boards that the county commissioners appoint a commissioner to. That's just one commissioner instead of having an agency where you've got both the chairman and the vice chairman of the county commissioners on that board. There was a recommendation and we've received a few phone calls concerned about this. The, the animal service advisory board meets every month on a monthly basis. Of course, during COVID, there were a lot of times the board did not meet. And the recommendation came for the county commissioners to consider, instead of the animal services board meeting every month, that they meet quarterly. And some of the concerns that have been phoned into our, into our office is, is that the animal services board needs to meet more than quarterly. Of course, we had the bylaws set up so that if there's, something comes up that we need to have a special meeting, we could always have a special meeting. And Mr. Chairman, that, that was a, we have received some calls concerned that the board is going from monthly meetings to quarterly meetings.
Are you making a recommendation or like to bi-monthly or anything like that or?
Well, the, the animal services board recommended quarterly. But of course, there weren't a lot, there wasn't negative comment at that time. I mean, the board's gonna meet as many times as it needs to, to address issues. So it could very well be that every other month is an appropriate time for the animal services board to meet. I think the Board of Health meets quarterly. You'd have the animal services board meeting every other month. That would give plenty of time to develop an agenda, a good agenda, a meaningful agenda that'd be presented to the board.
The Board of Health meets every other month.
Every other month, okay. Well, this would, I'm sorry, be consistent with the Board of Health, every other month.
Questions up?
What does their board, what did their board bring? Did the board bring quarterly?
Quarterly. Yes. And that's the only issue that we've got any kind of reaction to. Not, not overwhelming, but
Right, right, right.
We did get a couple of responses, calls.
And Mr. Chairman, I did get a call. And that was one of the issues was why are you going from monthly to quarterly? They need to meet more often than that. And I said, okay, I'll, I'll bring that to the board. You know, I'm not saying one way or the other about, about that, but if, if there are other, I think bi-monthly, if that's what the health board does.
You want to make a motion?
Well, I mean, I would just like to say that I think it's important to support a board decision. So that, that's my only thing. And it seems to me like if the board says do once a quarter, then we should honor that. But then they can always come back and say, that's not enough. We, we have a lot going on and would like to meet every other month. And, and that way their, their board would be bringing it. I mean, I generally try to support what.
David, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I, I think quarterly would work fine, given the fact that you do have the ability to call a meeting at any time. Some of the, some of the meetings have, I'll be honest, we have not, have been sparsely attended and had a hard time getting quorum. I think if you had a meeting more centralized and spread out, you know, that, that would make it more important for people to be able to make an effort to be there. And I think quarterly would, would work out fine, given the, the ability to meet, to have a call meeting at any point in time.
And I do think Jonathan has been officially promoted to our director. That was one of the things that we had, that we haven't had since its inception, other than about 30 days. But that, that's been addressed. And I, I think that we're, we're moving forward. It was something brand new for us. And I think that's what led to having two commissioners on the board, meeting every month. But I, I think we've sort of got things under control and, and we've gotten a lot of volunteers more than we had before.
And that, that was one thing I did want to bring up is since, you know, the pandemic, everything like that's kind of messed up everything for everybody. And the volunteer program was kind of put on hold there for about two years, but now we got it up and running. So I know there's people on the internet and stuff won't know, what are we doing? When are we gonna do it? Well, we're doing it now. We've been doing it now for about two months so they can put in, they can come in, they can help. I was told there was supposed to be about 80 people at one time that said they were coming. We're, yeah, we're ready. We're ready for all the people we can get to come in and help us out.
I will say, one, one of the issues, our, our bylaws calls for a veterinarian. We have not been able to fill that position. And I think that's due to the workload that they're, they're having in their own businesses.
We've actually called some, some of the vets ourself and they're actually looking to hire more vets even in their facility. So they don't even have time to even really deal with their own stuff they got going on. They're actually just trying to hire, hire more vets themselves. So that's where we're running into the issue, we're not being able to even get vets to even do things that we need them to do, harder or less come, come to a, a board meeting.
And also point out, we've got, we've added Renee Bryant on one of our board members. And she has really been a big, a big plus in, and I think the night we had the dogs, the sheriff had, fifty some dogs, I think she was there.
She was there till three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Helping us out. Um, like I said, that's one thing.
Placed some of those animals or getting them.
She did.
Yes.
And that's one thing about Renee, Renee's always boots on the ground. She's always the one that, like I said, she's not gonna stay behind a computer. She's gonna get out there and she's gonna help you. She's gonna do what needs to be done. And that's, that's what we need. We need people out there doing the work with us, helping us, not being against us. That's what we need.
We're working with Chelsea and communication is to make sure the social media contacts that the animal services department has, that they're really getting the word out to the community about what they do and the services they provide.
We'll, we'll just take it to be this and I think it's good that he's, he suggested we put in there at least quarterly. That leaves it open to have other, that gives you the language you need if you want another.
Say no longer than quarterly or no, yeah, no less than quarterly.
At least. Yeah, no less than quarterly. Uh, to get it in there so you have it right. The other thing is, of course, we want one or two commissioners. We only have one commissioner on most other boards.
Yep.
And I think just, now you two guys are the ones that's been on there. Is it warranted that we need two?
Well, we, we pretty, I, I sure don't see meeting monthly. And I, I don't see having two commissioners at this point. We, I think we've got good leadership and we've got a good staff. And indications are they're, they're working well together. And I would say no longer than quarterly, no less than quarterly. We couldn't have one.
That's right.
Yeah. Or it says, special meetings of the board may be called at any time. So we've got it in the bylaws.
If we need to call one, call it.
Meetings a month if we need to.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I'm, I'm fine like it's, like it's written, it's been vetted by the board itself. So I feel confident in their abilities.
All right.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman? Do we need to vote?
No, we don't have a motion.
Do, do both of them at the same time?
Yes, yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we repeal the previous animal service ordinance and adopt the revised version as presented to be effective August 1st, 2022. And two, to adopt the resolution to amend the bylaws of the animal services advisory board.
Have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no. And it's approved. And thank you, Jonathan and all the staff.
Yes, thank y'all.
All right. Item C is been getting a lot of comments and so workforce realignment, it brings back memories of the mental health realignment that took place several years ago. Although, you know, looking back, I think we just picked the right team leader in that case, or we were assigned to that one. We are Regional Consolidated Services. Crystal Parks is the director. She is with us tonight. She's been available through this whole process. The COG had a couple of workshops. Hal and I went to one together. I went to the other one myself, along with all the counties in our region. Our workforce board is made up of Randolph, Alamance, Montgomery and Moore and Orange. Counties were asked by July, about August 1st to declare, there's lots of them that haven't done that. Of ours, two have already declared that they're gonna be changing. That's Orange and Moore. I've sent y'all a text earlier this afternoon that I received from Montgomery County saying they're looking to, they're gonna make a decision on August the 10th. Alamance has delayed theirs to August 15th, I think it is. They're all in that together. So if that follows, and that won't, that won't change until next year. So the funding is in place, other than what the state has reduced their funding by, and that was across the board. But their funding is, is safer this year as the five counties. But now, next year, that's gonna change by Crystal's numbers. I think Orange and Moore would take about 89, a little bit less than $90,000 out of her budget, which is about 40%. Montgomery's maybe another 15. How much? 30? 13. Yeah. So we're 102 and maybe 45%. So I, I just think, and I know Commissioner Haywood has been out of pocket for a couple of weeks at NACO conference and a little vacation for this summer. And I, I think the decisions of the others have a lot to do with the process. I would just suggest, we have a, we have a call meeting set for August the 15th. And I would suggest that we bring this up at that time and I'll get with y'all to see if we want to have some presentations by others or, or if we feel comfortable making decision. Montgomery probably is gonna meet first before the other, the other two. But it's, it's still a working process. I did check with Senator Craven about a delay and he didn't think that would be, that's not an issue.
It's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'll make a motion to delay that until our 15th meeting. If we can get it on the calendar then, just to give, like you said, a couple of us have been out of pocket and a little more time to spend researching this and having some conversations.
All right. I have a second. Sure.
Please, please come to the mic. Thanks. I'm in support of doing whatever you need to do, but August 15th is also Alamance County's meeting at 6:30.
The what? Alamance is what?
Alamance is meeting on workforce. It's on August 15th at 6:30. So that's the same time.
Yes.
I can't be in both places.
Okay. We, we'll just do it in September.
I'm sorry?
We'll do it in September if they've already, if they've already contacted you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I'll change my motion to September meeting.
All right.
It's okay.
To a regularly scheduled meeting on the September 6th.
That'll be Tuesday after Labor Day. Is that a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Have a motion in a second, that we bring that up at our regularly announced September board meeting and see what plays out. All right. Further discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no. And we're moving on. Item D, Sheriff's Office Additional Positions. Steve Brew? Y'all come right ahead.
Good evening. The reason we're before you this evening is just to let you know, if you don't already know, that the city of Trinity has approved three new that the city of Trinity has approved three new positions, which would, uh, bring the total to five for the city of Trinity. The three new positions were originally discussed on ten-hour shifts, and the sheriff has asked us to reapproach Trinity, which we did last week, uh, and reconfigure some salary adjustments for those three deputies for twelve-hour shifts, which would bring them in line with our current patrol division and the twelve-hour shifts that they work.
Right.
And, of course, Justin's here with us tonight, if you've got any questions. And I know you've got the material, but if you've got any questions relating to those salary adjustments.
But it's, it's for the three additional positions and one car, is that what it is, Justin?
It's actually the breakdown, um, if you have the handout that I gave before you, uh, the meeting started, on page two, it has the breakdown per deputy versus three deputies, which they are requesting. That gives you a breakdown of all the salary and fringe benefits that we've requested to receive in order to supply the three additional deputy sheriffs. And if you don't mind, I would like to go into some slight detail with some of the other items listed on there.
Sure.
If you refer to vehicle and equipment installation, what I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of is that, obviously, this is to purchase the vehicle, the installation, and the, all the equipment that goes with that. However, with the current contract negotiations, the twenty-seven thousand, that's seven hundred ninety-five dollars, which they would pay each year, we would have to come up with the additional one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Sheriff Seaball has decided to use lap salaries to take care of that in order to purchase those three vehicles up front. Furthermore, uh, the fuel and maintenance costs, which we've included, which we have not done in the past, obviously encumbers any type of maintenance issues with the vehicles and our fuel for the annual budget. Program, one-time program investment fee, that pretty much participates as far as the equipment for the deputy sheriff. That deals with their equipment, utility belts, uniforms, uh, weapon, um, taser, everything that's included with that, uh, is what they're, have initially agreed to reimburse the county. The only thing that we are subject to speak with them next week following is a slight change with the ten to twelve-hour shifts.
You're going to their board with that change next week, is that what you're saying? You're going to the Trinity board with that change next week?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Are, are y'all gonna be in the, the house that Trinity just made available? Is that where they're gonna be located?
Yes.
I think that was their original city hall, town hall for?
From my understanding, I was, uh, speaking with Lieutenant Colonel earlier in regards to it, so often, NC sixty-two, they actually have, I believe it used to be a city department that used the building on the right-hand side. They are gonna renovate that completely for the use of the sheriff's office. Uh, in addition to that, they've, uh, requested us to slightly offset the cost with that uh, versus a, a rental fee, a monthly rental fee, which equates to six thousand dollars a year, and along with keeping up with the utilities. So, a small price to pay for them, uh, allow, allowing us to have an actual office there off of sixty-two.
Other questions?
Just, just one question, how, how does this relate to what you're doing with SROs? Or is this kind of in line with what you're doing with schools and SROs?
As far as the shifts, the, the?
Well, not, not shifts, the costing, I'm saying. The county's costing with, with Trinity.
Imagine, do you mean relative to what the schools pay for SROs?
Yes.
And forgive me, Commissioner McDowell, um, I know in an email that I had tried to respond back in regards to that, the set cost that Randolph County Public Schools account for is completely separate from that. That is something that we're looking forward to speaking with you all at some time in the future, as well as the superintendent. But, the correlation within are not very similar, they're kind of completely different topics. That is something, though, we are seeking to address.
I, I'm not questioning you, I'm just saying, is that similar in, in cost, I assume?
To some degree, because of the hours and the change. You have shift employees that work twelve hours, which obviously with and, and SROs that typically work an eight-hour, um, workday. So, there is a slight change in the actual cost associated with that, with the salary and fringe benefits, so.
Just, just a question, and just to kind of get my mind what we were doing here versus what we do with the school system.
All right, other questions?
Got somebody lined up to do these three positions? I mean, how's, how's, I mean, everybody's looking for, for officers.
Oh, yeah, definitely, and Sergeant DeAngelo, um, has been doing a wonderful job as far as trying to interview individuals and seek experienced employees for the position because of just the characteristics of having three new additional deputy sheriffs, not trying to hire on, um, in other words, individuals that are green, people with experience. So, they've, they've been doing interviews, it's just been an ongoing process.
Yeah, I just noticed it was a, to be a, to be determined on when everything starts, so.
Correct.
The other thing that I see, but, oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, the other thing I see, and I, I'd like you, uh, at least give me an idea, uh, it looks like to me that doing this would help you in the overall picture of law enforcement in the area, I would think.
Sure. Of course, they're, they're giving a whole lot more houses to
That's correct, and without anybody from the Trinity, Trinity City Council here tonight, yes, I think, uh, between Archdale and Trinity, and I know that's including Archdale, was nearly two thousand new homes, and I think it's over around eleven hundred, twelve hundred, I think, for Trinity, maybe even more. So, what they're trying to do, and, and the land's already there, they've cleared it, the houses are getting ready to go up. What I think Trinity's wanting to do is just go ahead and, right now, go ahead, because I know it's gonna take some time to have the deputies selected, to get them in Trinity, but to have them in place before you have an influx of, of more residents.
Do you have any, do you have anybody in Trinity, like, administration or city council that you cover? Or you're just running like any other part of the county?
I'm sorry, what, what's the?
Do you, who, do you have a contact within the town of, the city of Trinity, and, that you report to on some base, regular, regular basis?
Well, right now, we go through liaison with Sergeant DeAngelo, who is the deputy that's up there. And I know with, um, you know, Robbie Walker, that's on, and, uh, also, you know, we keep in touch with the city manager, Stevie Cox, as well as the mayor, so we do, and primarily, we go through him, just so there is one point of contact, and they're not receiving multiple calls, but we do keep in touch with them regularly, and that's why we met last week.
That's, that's real wild.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Hope, do you have something?
Well, no, I was just going to say, for the benefit of people that are listening at home, that, that don't have these in, in front of us, that, um, I, I just want, I just want clarification. So, um, the sheriff's department has been asked to, um, supply, supply three deputies for the Trinity area, but Trinity will be paying the complete cost. The only thing I see that they're not in, and in addition, Trinity is remodeling an existed space for them to have an, uh, a satellite office there, and they would be paying five hundred dollars a month rental fee for that, for that presence there. So they would be paying that five hundred dollars a month from the sheriff's office budget, and then they would be, um, purchasing the three cars, the sheriff's office, sheriff's department.
With, with lap salaries?
Yes, yes, with lap salaries. But, all the equipment for those fuel ma, those kinds of things will be paid by Trinity. So I just wanted to say that for the benefit of, of people that are listening at home, that don't have the benefit of having this with us.
That's correct.
Did I get it right?
Yes, ma'am.
Comments?
And with the growth explosion up there, then, that's needed.
Was that a unanimous vote on the council?
Well, actually, in, in
Or they hadn't voted yet?
It'll be next month.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But this is, you're gonna present this plan to them?
I'm not, I don't know if they have it for next week's, on next week's agenda, if we met this soon as last week. So it's either next week or, uh, the next month. They meet on the second Monday of, of each month. But I believe it is next week.
That, that's what I understood. Comments? More?
I think it'll be great for that corner of the county, you know, when it's all done, said, you know, Trinity gets the help they need, and it just frees up our patrol guy in that area that he's not responding in Trinity all the time. It's just, I think it's a win-win, and Trinity's picking up one bill, so it's.
You have a motion?
Sure.
You gonna read it?
Let me read that one. You're not gonna let me get by with saying, okay. I'd make a motion to approve the three additional deputy positions funded by the city of Trinity and associated budget amendment in the amount of two ninety-two, one seventy-three.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no, and it's approved. Thank y'all. Appreciate it. All right, um, are USDA loans, Will?
Good evening, commissioners. As you know, we have an opportunity to, um, work with Randolph Electric Membership Corporation. They have access to some USDA rural development loan money, and they have been supportive of our agricultural, uh, center project. And we talked about, um, how we have, um, two different loans to discuss. One is specifically for the arena space, and then a second, two million dollar loan is for the event center space. And this maximized the amount we could pull down from USDA. These loans are for soft costs, it's not for construction, so we can use it to pay for professional fees, equipment, furniture, uh, probably fencing, things like that, but not the, uh, the building itself. There's zero percent interest, but there is a one percent administrative fee. You can go up to ten years amortization. There has to be some security with, uh, this loan from USDA perspective. And what RMC was pitching was escrow account, where we would put some of the county money with a bank trustee, and then, um, that serves as collateral for the loan until it's paid off. You can also do a deed of trust on the property, and I'm not sure if the board has a preference on which way we would go on that. Uh, there is a cost to, you know, ha, uh, hire the bank to manage the escrow account, where the deed of trust is the kind of done, one and done, but, uh, does, uh, put a loan leaning against our property. But we do that with most of the other debt that we issue, um, for our buildings, schools, or detention center. Debt applications, um, I've prepared those, ready to go out in the mail, and, uh, LGC will consider it at their meeting on September the twenty-second, so we could close anytime after that. So here's a summary of the amortization schedule, uh, zero percent interest, but there is that one percent, uh, each year of any outstanding balance. So if we did decide to pay it off early, uh, we could eliminate that administrative cost.
All right, this is for a public hearing. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to the issue of a USDA loan through Randolph Electric Membership? Funds to, for funds for the Farm Food and Family Event Center? Anyone here who wishes to speak to that issue? And seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we consider a resolution to, uh, for the required findings, and then, uh, approval of the associated budget amendment. Any other questions, Will?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution, make an required findings and authorizing and approving installment financing agreement, authorize the chairman to sign the loan documents, and to approve the associated budget amendment in the amount of four billion dollars.
Have a second to the motion?
Second.
Further discussion, questions?
I'd just like to thank, uh, Randolph
Yeah.
Electric Membership for their efforts and support. This, you know, gets us to a, a good place as far as the funding goes. Uh, I think they've been working on this for a pretty good while, uh, and so, uh, this is a culmination of a lot of their hard work. Uh, we do appreciate that.
I don't think Fred Smith was here tonight, he was here last month, but, um, he played a big role in helping get us through that and getting these funds available, and I would say, David probably knows more about it, um, he, uh, he kept us in line longer than was supposed to, to, to get the money, too.
I think there was some, um, some, uh, I don't know what you wanna call it, uh, some wheeling and dealing and some, some, uh,
Arm twist.
Persistence, maybe that's the best way to put it, uh, to keep us, uh, from having to go back to start the process all over again. So, uh, we were able to maintain what we already had, uh, and just go from there rather than starting over from scratch.
Right. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no, and it's approved. And Will, you have the next one, our Rural Transformation Grant for the F-three EC project.
Well, this, again, is another opportunity to help finance the, um, the, um, F-three EC project. Paxton Authers, our engineer, and Kenny Scher, and the Corporate Extension Director, filed for, um, a grant from the, um, Department of Commerce. They had received some of the ARPA money from the state, and the state created Rural Transportation or Rural Transformation Grant Program. And you can't really read that, but, uh, one of the programs in that transformation grant was, uh, for resiliency. Resilient Neighborhoods Program. And what that will do is provide some funding to, for the creation of healthy living initiatives, development of health and nutritional education programs, and elimination of food deserts. So that, um, is the purpose of the nine hundred thousand dollar grant that, um, is being offered to the county. So what we would ask you to do is, uh, to accept the grant and to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement. This is ARPA-funded, so it is all the hoops and everything, and so it's gonna be turning the Ag Center from being primarily, uh, a local project into, uh,
So it's an ARPA project, but this is, this is actually state ARPA money, it's not
It's not out of our allocation, it's the state's allocation.
Right. Everybody understand that? All right, have a motion, questions, Will?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion, we accept the North Carolina Department of Commerce Rural Transformation Grant for the Farm Food and Family Education Center, in the amount of nine hundred thousand dollars. Authorize the chairman to sign the doc, grant documents, and to approve the associated, uh, project amendment, budget minute.
Have a second to the motion? Did I hear a second? Hope, thank you. Further discussion? I would say it can't, David, this, this moves us, these two items move us pretty close to the budget, won't it?
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I can't keep up the running toll, Kenny, but I, I think we're pretty much right, and that's given where the project costs are in this environment. Uh, things are, as we've seen in other areas and other projects, are a little bit more expensive. So, um, we're, I think, hopefully next month, gonna have, uh, the architects back to present kind of where we are. The, the committees, uh, have been meeting, uh, talking about various aspects of the project, the arena, uh, the meeting space, uh, the food hub, the commercial kitchens, the educational spaces, to try to, uh, to, to winnow out a lot of the, the different issues that we've got going there so that they can move forward with the, uh, further design, so. Uh, and this gets us that much, much further, and, and I like the term there, I know it's got ARPA money, and, but it says grant, not loan. So I like that, uh, may have to jump through a few more hoops, but, uh, I think, Will, you're used to jumping through hoops by now anyway, so. It's just, it's just which hoop you gotta jump through.
Right.
All right.
Yeah, we're getting used to it.
We have voted. Wellness update, Sam Barner?
We didn't vote.
Didn't vote yet.
We gotta vote, yeah.
We didn't vote? Oh, I thought we did. All right, they, those in favor of the motion on the, uh, state transformation grant for the Farm Food and Family Event Center? Those in favor will say aye. Aye. Oppose no, and I oppose no, and it's approved. Now you have, you're up.
Mr. Chair, Board of County Commissioners, it's an honor to come before you and update you on our amazing employee wellness program. Before I start, I just want to share with you, our core values for our employee wellness is simple. Our employees and their families are our most valuable resource. With that said, I want to update you on a few amazing programs that we have in place today. If you notice a theme through the first three or four programs I'm going to talk about, we are dealing with the mental health of our employees and their families. That is a big theme in post-pandemic world. The mental health and mental challenges of our employees is still there. With that said, we have brought on a new vendor that started July 1st. And this is amazing benefit for our employees. We're expanding access to counselors and therapists. In the past, our counselors and therapists were out of Raleigh. They weren't local, and that was a big complaint from our employees. Our utilization was low. Now that we're bringing these counselors on site, they're from our area. In fact, they're from the Ashbrook Counseling and Wellness Center, Liza Charles's group. They have nine therapists and they're bringing on two more therapists. That doubles the amount of therapists that are available for our employees and their families. So that's a huge deal. Other things that this therapy group is bringing to the table is they are bringing onsite proactive training for what we call our at-risk groups. Sheriff's Office, Emergency Services, Public Health, Department of Social Services. Those groups that are higher risk because of the nature of their work. So we're taking a proactive approach and we are creating training programs for those specific groups. The third thing that this group brings to the table is the fact that they are offering mediation programs for employees. We've already used that in the past recently. They're also bringing a mediation program for our subordinate employee relationship issues. So that is a big push that we're offering. So this expands the scope of offering therapy and counseling for our employees. But not only for our employees, it's for all part, part-time and full-time employees and their families and children. That's a big deal. The second thing that we, that we are bringing to the table is something that we've had in place for many, many years in Emergency Services. Kristi McCorkedale has done an amazing job overseeing the Critical Instant Stress Management Program. She's done a great job with Emergency Services. But what we're finding is this program is too good to be limited to Emergency Services. So I've been working with Steve Meyer from the Sheriff's Office and of course with Kristi. We are expanding this program to the Sheriff's Office. We are also expanding, not just to first responders. We are now expanding this program to Department of Social Services and Public Health, which is unique for this county and this state. Most counties have a critical incident program, but it's just for their first responders. Now, what is critical instant stress management? Well, our first responders see things that normal people aren't exposed to experience. Death, destruction, I mean, things that just affect you mentally, PTSD. And so this critical instant stress management program is a team that comes together that works with our employees who have experienced these critical incidents. They meet with them within the first 48 hours of an incident. And they have a plan to meet with them in the next week after that, so it's a long-term plan. We also use our therapy group. So there's also a licensed therapist on this critical incident team. Now let me back up a second. Each department has their own CISM team. Emergency Services, Sheriff's Office, Public Health, and Department of Social Services. We've already used this in the last year several times. And it benefits our employees. It helps them process. So this is a huge addition, addition to our employee wellness program. And one other thing I want to share about this, what makes this program possible is the support team. This week, Kristi McCorkedale is conducting a three-day training at Emergency Services to train peers that will be a part of this program, and that's the next slide you see there. This is another program that we are expanding. It's a peer-to-peer support program. We've had this in the Emergency Services Department. Now we're expanding to the Sheriff's Office, to DSS, and to Public Health. What is peer-to-peer support? These are coworkers that work together. They have been trained on how to deal and talk and listen to employees who have gone through a stressful situation. You just heard a story earlier tonight, Julie Miller. She encountered a stressful situation. That's what we call a critical instant stress incident. And what we saw was Pam Resch utilized a peer-to-peer support situation. She learned how to listen, ask the right questions, and help her process. Then she took the next step and got her to our therapy group. She called one of our counselors, and now they're working with her on a regular basis to help her process. So this is an amazing step for our employee wellness program. So our peer-to-peer support program works with our CISM team to really help our employees process and deal with things that they're not supposed to see or shouldn't see. And so I have to tell you that Bill Hatfield, our chaplain, Steve Meyer, of course Kristi McCorkedale, Tracy from the Department of Social Services, and Jeanetta Butler have been instrumental. Melissa Thompson and Tara Aker from Public Health have volunteered to be a part of this. So this is a huge expansion of our wellness program. We're really touching on our lives of our employees in many, many ways. The third or fourth thing I wanted to share with you tonight is something that is kind of funny. This is one of our most popular wellness programs. It started kind of as, as a, kind of an accident during the pandemic. And it's become so popular that our employees are demanding it. Now Animal Services runs this program. They do it quarterly. They take a dog, a certified pet therapy dog, to different locations, to actually all of our departments. But they only do it quarterly because of lack of staffing. Well, Public Health has volunteered to assist with this program. We already have added two more pet therapy dogs that have been certified. And now they visit animal, they visit our employees at least once a month with extended visits. So this is a big deal. In fact, it is a big deal in helping our employees improve their health and well-being. Now I'll tell you one more thing. The pet therapy program is now going to be utilized with the CISM teams. So if an employee goes through critical incident stress management and they come meet with a CISM team, in many cases, they will bring a pet therapy dog again to help them process. So again, we're utilizing our existing services, Public Health, Animal Services, that are really elevating the health and well-being of our employees. The next item I wanted to update you on is something I am very proud of. Seven years ago, we made the switch from Five Points Medical Center to Wake Forest Baptist Health as far as doing our onsite biometric screenings. One of the reasons we switched was because they are great at keeping data. And one of the things that I sold to our management was, when you have years and years of data, guess what? That is gold. And now we're in our seventh year. We have seven years of data. Now we're ready to take the next step. I've been working with Jennifer Layton from Public Health. And she's now reached out to University of North Carolina at Charlotte and at UNCG. We are looking at developing a thesis reach program, research program on taking our claims data and our aggregate biometric screening data to do a research project on. In other words, to help us really predict trends of the health and well-being of our employees. That's a big deal. You may have heard the term longitudinal study. This is a longitudinal study for the study of our health and wellness statistics. So this is a big deal. I don't know if any county in this state is doing a longitudinal study on the health and well-being of the statistics of their employees. What will it do? It will help us really fine tune on where we're going with our program and help us predict what we can do to offset medical cost. And the last thing I want to share with you is our health fair. We've had a health fair ever since I've been here, except in 2020 and the last two, last three years because of the pandemic. Well, in 2023, we are going to resume our employee health fair. However, we're going to have a twist to it. It's not just going to be for our employees. I'm working with Public Health right now. We are going to expand our health fair and make it a community health fair. And we are going to expand our screenings. We had 21 screenings the last time we had a health fair. We are going to have 30 onsite screenings. And what's going to happen is we are going to offer this, this health fair to our marginalized and low-income populations throughout the county. This is a big deal. It will not only assist and continue to help our employees that work here, but will expand it to their families, and we're going to expand it and make it a community health fair. We're also reaching out to provide transportation needs for those low-income areas to be brought in to go through these screenings. And so this is a big step in, in working with Public Health and expanding our employee wellness program so we're actually reaching the community and helping the marginalized population. So I just want to share with you, these are one of many things that we are doing to, to create and expand our culture of wellness. And I left all of you a brochure that's got many other programs that we are doing right now. And so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to serve this county and to serve our employees and their families. And I appreciate your support in this. Got any questions?
Any questions, anybody? Comments?
I got, I got a question here. Are you going to have therapy dogs for Will and Hal?
That's a priority. That's definitely a priority. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention that tonight you ended through the declaration, our, our state of emergency, August 16th. One of the very special things that occurred during the pandemic was a collaboration between Sam Barner and the Public Health Department in ways to reach out to our businesses and our industries in Randolph County. Right when that pandemic was beginning, to get them, because they had not a clue, how, none of, to address those situations. And to provide those businesses and those industries with information on how they could best address the pandemic and the, and the COVID virus that was going on. And, and it coincides with what Sam was talking about. If we're doing wonderful things with our employees, and we're getting grants from our insurance company for our wellness programs, and we want to make sure through Public Health that that's getting shared with the community, with our citizens out in the county. And, and that's what Sam was talking about on these, on the health fair, is to bring the public in and to let them see what's going on and provide them information. So I thank Sam, and I thank our Public Health Department and our health educators for all that they're doing in it. It's, it's a story that don't get told, it needs to be told.
I appreciate your support, Hal, and I appreciate your support, Will, because it's a team effort in, in making our program a success. And the benefactors are our employees and their families.
Right.
That it? Thank you very much.
I'd just like to say that in the mission statement, that very first phrase is, you know, I think is critical because our employees and their families are our most valuable resource. And they are. Without them, we don't offer anybody any services in Randolph County. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, our Juvenile Day Reporting Center project, Paxton?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This is for a change order at Juvenile Day Reporting Center. And first I wanted to just give you a quick refresher on the project. This is the space that child support moved out of. We're going in and building four new classrooms for JDRC. You can see we're renovating probably about a third of the building. The rest of it is going to be able to use as it is. This building is non-metallic, or I'm sorry, non-combustible construction. It's like steel roof with brick walls and acoustical drop ceiling throughout. Typically, a building like this would have electrical in conduit or metal-clad cable. However, in our case, we have a lot of non-metallic cable. Here's a picture of the bub ceiling. You see a lot of these cables that are coated in plastic sheathing. Like I say, normally we would not see this in this type of building. When the electrical inspector came out, we were thinking that it would be grandfathered in. All the new wiring that's being installed is being, putting conduit in, metal-clad cable. And we were thinking that this was grandfathered. But when he came out, he saw a lot of the wiring that was newer. And the reason he knew it was newer is because it's color-coded. You'll see a lot of these cables are yellow and orange. And that didn't exist in 1980 when the building was built. So this, that was probably not, didn't come along until the mid-'90s. So technically, he could require us to go in and trace those wires out and probably change them out throughout. But he's compromised and said that if we will just change out the cables in the area that were open up to ceiling, that he would accept that, and that's more than fair. So we asked for a cost from our electrical contractor, and it did cost more than I was anticipating. However, the good news is you have put enough money in the capital fund that it covers it. We don't have to put any more money in. So I would make a request that you approve a change order to the contract with Granco Construction for the replacement of the non-metallic cable at a cost of $20,750 and that you authorize the county manager to sign the change order. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have a question? Have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve a change order to the contract with Granco Construction to add $20,750 for replacement of existing non-metallic cables in the JDRC renovation project and authorize the county manager to sign the change order.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paxton. Hal, do you have anything?
August the 15th at 6 o'clock on a Monday, we will have a public hearing to consider the planning board's proposal to support some amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance.
Any Commissioner have anything tonight? I want to say while Paxton's here, we, all of a sudden, we had an issue with where our magistrates are located during the renovations at the jail in the intake area. Judge Hill, who is over the magistrates, we met Friday. We met again this morning. I think that's all been resolved with the use of some new software called Court Call. It's a part of software we already have, so doesn't require any additional funding. But those magistrates have been located off-site on South Federal Street, near the BP station. That hasn't been working out very well. But we've given two weeks to have it all, it'll all be done by basically another form of Zoom without transporting prisoners. So it really turned out to be a, a good solution. Commissioner Kidd was involved. I think we had, counting the guy on the screen, either 13 or 14 people in the room this morning. And worked through it, so, and I continue. Paxton is, he's been a trooper and so many issues that confronting us right now. And just wanted to recognize him for, of course, that can be said for all of you, the issues that we face are, they never get easier. So it's very important and glad to have all of you here. All right, we have a closed session. Do I have a motion for closed session? What, before we do that? All right, do I have a motion for closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I enter, move, we enter a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A4 to discuss matters relating to the relocation, expansion of industries or other business in the area served by the public body, including agreement on tentative listed economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations. And pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5 to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by, on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
I have a motion and second, my Commissioner. Hal, do I have a discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those no. We're in closed session, and we do not anticipate a, any further business to be conducted after the closed session. Thank you.